Make the whole thing.
Yeah, it's always. Well, you know who's missing?
Peggy?
Yeah. I don't want to start without Peggy. She is, um, one, she's very, you know, interested.
Hey, Bill, while, while I'm Bill Sterling, while Bill Payne is trying to get Peggy, can you, can you get us a nice golf package for the auction to the two places?
Yeah, Joe would do that.
You could talk to Megan about getting something like super special from Bay Creek.
Yeah, man. Do the country club as well.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah.
I'll get both of them.
Yeah, I, like the last, um, oh, Rebecca, I think I'm coming over Thursday.
Oh, um, I know I was gonna be in the office Wednesday. Let me see what I can do on Thursday to meet you, okay?
Okay.
If I'm not, I'll see if Caitlin is in there.
Well, you know, at the auction, at the last thing, there, there was nothing that was inexpensive. You know, like, um, so I'm wondering what we want to do in terms of that for swine and wine. Peggy?
What is, what is the, the best Rebecca on a virtual silent auction? Which kind of items? Is it better to have a few or a lot or?
Well, I'll tell you what, this is not virtual.
We don't want to start without you. No, no, come on, stop. Just, just come on board.
Say that again, please.
Oh, I'll go ahead and answer your question. It's still a learning curve. We're still figuring it out. With Youth of the Year, we really did have different price points. Did Karen, you saw the auction. Did you like that there were different price points?
Right.
So we had, um, you know, uh, things, I can't remember what the most inexpensive thing was, but we had different levels. Now, right now, I'm in the process of, uh, put, we have this week, and this is another good thing for you to go check out, see what you like, what you don't like. The Suffolk Oyster Roast is happening. Now, they, um, they have like thirty some items for the, yeah, you got it. Good. They have like thirty some items for their silent auction. And we already cut it off, but we're still getting things. People are still getting it. And it's like, wow, this is great, but I gotta put it all on the auction. I can tell you that we have everything there from, uh, your expensive packages. We do have some of the expensive vacation packages, which I'll talk to you more about later. Down to, we have baskets of popcorn and, um, things like that. Probably the least expensive thing we're starting at is like fifty dollars. But we're going up to items for thousands.
The least expensive is fifty dollars?
Right, for, uh, right now that they're doing on Suffolk.
Yeah, we have kind of a different market, I feel, but.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, um, let's get back on track. We'll certainly come back to, to auctions and stuff, but Peggy's here. And, um, uh, and what will, what I'd like to do first is let Rebecca show us what, and, and the other thing I didn't do, I didn't, uh, give you, uh, share.
Oh, yes, if you could do that.
Okay, I think you're, yeah, you can share now. Rebecca's going to give us a sense of what we're working with and what our supporters will see on, um, Swine and Wine Evening. Those of you who, uh, did the Youth of the Year have some, Karen, are you okay?
Well, if Rebecca can have a virtual background, I could have one. Peggy?
There's a reason that I always have a virtual background, and I won't share that right now, but it happened during a church service.
Okay. We'll let that one sit.
There's always a virtual background here now, always.
Rebecca, uh, can you do that for us?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Well, first of all, um, let me just say that I, um, I'm not going to be able to create your page until we have some content. But I did, um, you have a basic shell of a page right now. Um, and I will be happy to, I'll show it to you if I get it. Hold on here. That's the oyster roast one. Now I have, this is all you have right now. It's gonna get bigger and better. But right now, your page, uh, just says Swine and Wine 2020. Stay tuned. Um, for those of you who, uh, came to Youth of the Year, I'm gonna show you that page because this is, Swine and Wine is going to be much like that, but I assume it's going to be smaller because there was so much to Youth of the Year. There was a huge video. Whoops, that's not it. Hold on here. I got too many tabs open. Basically, we had a banner at the top. I would love to get the banner at the top for you with the little pig. I love the little pig with the wine glasses. And you see the marble in the background? I would love to get little tiles of the little pig, just like the background, be like all little pigs. That's up to you, but that's kind of what I have in mind is, uh, the little pigs. You have the little tabs up here. Um, and of course, we had a video. This is a two-hour-long video. It was a huge video. Uh, if you would like to do a video, we can do something shorter. We don't have to. Uh, that's up to you. I know that for, uh, Suffolk, we're doing a short video. We're doing like a thirty-minute video. Uh, that's gonna have the unit director talking. Some of the board members are also talking. And, uh, we have, uh, some old videos of the event that we're putting in that. So it's gonna be a lot of fun. Now, the, this event is over, but we still have like a link to go back to here, like to go back and give on the website. So even after the event is over, we still want people to give. Now, something that I already have up on your site?
Now, go, go back, uh, will you, for a second?
Yes.
Those tabs.
At the top.
Yeah. They don't, but they didn't jump out at me as tabs.
Okay.
And, um, and maybe it was that they, they seem to be live links when you, when you hover over them. Or maybe because the text is so small. Um, and I, I, you know, I, I was, who else was on, on the Youth of the Year?
What do you mean, who else was on it?
I mean, I'm talking,
Like who else?
I'm asking our board members.
Yeah. Who, who showed up? I was there.
I watched it afterwards, not live.
Did the tabs, uh, pop out for you?
Up here?
Yeah. See, that's how you get into the different things.
I can make them darker. I don't think I can make them bigger, but I can make them darker. I absolutely can do that.
Okay.
I didn't have any problem.
Okay.
And maybe it's just, you know, I'm not that bright now, um, but if we had fewer tabs, would they be larger?
Uh, no, they're not gonna be larger. I'll show you the Suffolk one. Now Suffolk is, um, Thursday, it's gonna look bigger. But right now, we just have two of the sponsors up here, and you see, we still have these two tabs. And you know what? I, I can make these darker, too. I just have them. That's the default color.
I can barely see them. Maybe it's not.
Can you put up a little sign? Click on tabs with an arrow or something?
Uh, I, uh, I'm not sure. I'll give it a try, but I can definitely make it darker. I can make this a darker font, for sure.
Okay.
Now,
Okay, what, I won't belabor that now, but, but I would ask that as many board members as possible, join the Suffolk Oyster Roast, and, so we can go to school on them.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Um, I want you to notice, too, and I still like having the sponsor tabs down, sponsored links and logos down the side. We're still, for Suffolk, we have a lot of latecoming money. That's why we don't have all the sponsor logos, because about eight of them don't have their logos too big. So I can't put them up there because I don't have them. But you see, when they happen, you'll have all these sponsor logos over here, and you can click on them. Now, we don't have all of our sponsors over here. We only have the ones that paid at a certain level.
Yeah.
And that's something that we can go over, is that we, before we can send out an invitation or send out a request for sponsorships, we need to come up with new sponsorship levels and what they get at each level. And that's okay, because we've already, we've already done a lot of the work on two events now, so we can show you. We know exactly what we can give.
Okay.
We know exactly what we can give. For example, our, um, our big sponsors here, our title sponsor, they got, um, first of all, they're the top here. They got their own tab. Look over here. They have, um, Dollar Tree, Family Dollar. They got their own tab. They were able to make their own video. They made their own ad. Um, and it all clicks right back. But then we have a sponsor tab, too, where we just listed all the sponsors and their ads, and Dollar Tree is top of that. So Dollar Tree got a lot, but these other folks, they got things, too. Um, you see, you can click on them. Now, when you get down to some of the lower levels, you, they can't click. The ads are a little smaller. Here are, um, some that they don't get their logo, but they get listed.
Yeah.
We listed even the, because you see, for this event, we used to sell tickets. People bought tickets, and then we didn't have the event. We contacted them and said, we're sorry, we can't have a ticket. Would you still like to donate? That, most of them left their money with us, and they're our supporters.
Okay, we'll come back to that.
Absolutely. I just wanted you to see a bit of how that worked.
All right. Um, now, can you go back to what we look like?
Absolutely. You don't look like much yet.
Yeah, we don't. But I, I just want to stare at us. Okay.
Bill, I want you to see something, though. Much for you. Um, up here, and I will make these tabs more prominent. But you see how online bidding works. This is line-by-line instruction of how to register to bid and how to bid.
That's great.
Yeah. And we can, um, we did send this out in advance for Youth of the Year. We can do something like that, too, for y'all.
Yeah. Okay.
Now, um, okay.
Hey, gang, what Rebecca is saying is she's doing things for slow learners.
No, here's the thing, though. Honestly, you need to, um, you need to go as fast as your slowest person.
Yeah.
Because how do we know our slowest person doesn't have two million dollars to give us?
That's right.
We don't know.
Yeah, we don't want anybody to get lost, you know, navigating.
Exactly. Exactly.
Okay.
Would you like to see how an auction looks?
Sure.
Okay. Now, uh, the Youth of the Year one is taken down. The Suffolk one is just now going up, so I'm gonna show you a sample one that I was given when they sold this to me. It's, oh, that's the fake page. Let me go to the fake auction. This is a fake auction, everyone. So this up here says Gifts and Bloom. That'll be your logo. We'll have the hands and say Eastern Shore Club. But down here, up here, you see this little line at the top, sponsors that pay a certain level get their logo on here, and they also get their logo intermittently between the auction packages. That's for, that's something we offer the sponsors. If you pay at a certain level, you're not only on the front page, you're not only on the sponsor page, you get to be on the actual bidding page where people are gonna see you. And as you refresh the page, the sponsors change places. So you have a constant flow of sponsors. Uh, but you see, you have, um, the auction items, and if any of you were at Youth of the Year, you may have seen that's where some of these auctions, I, auction items were, excuse me, we had a blue heart. And the blue heart was Fund in Need. And that was where people just clicked on it to donate money, and that was it. And we had those blue hearts interspersed between the auction item. And they specifically said, donate to our Fund in Need campaign. You don't get anything except a warm feeling for doing this.
Are we gonna have that?
That's, that's one I had a hard time finding. So how would it be displayed?
Uh, okay, so here you have a pa, a, a package, and here you'll have a blue heart. And you click on the blue heart, and instead of bidding on a package, it'll say donate. Donate twenty-five dollars.
Blue heart and the upper left,
Oh, that's a, don't even talk, look at that. That's not the blue heart I'm talking about. That's just, that's, I don't know what that is. That's not even the one I'm talking about.
So you'll, you'll have a icon that says donate in a very.
It's a, it's a heart that says Fund in Need is what it says. I made it. I can make it different. I can make it a different color if you want. I can make it say something different, something like that.
Why wouldn't you say?
You did do it, Bill.
You did, yeah.
Yeah, he, you did find it.
I did find it, but I had to work at it. I shouldn't have to work at giving money away.
And you're right. You're right. I need to make this easier.
I would like to see just a block that says, click to donate here.
You see at the top here, support our organization?
Yeah.
That's where you give money.
Well.
You can do that, too.
Support might mean rah rah rah. I, I'd like to say, give, put a dollar sign on it.
I, I can do that. I could put give money here. Now, here's the thing.
Look, we'll, we'll have a chance to review this again, but, but that's the kind of thing I'd like to see.
And you know, Bill, the nice thing with this is I go and work on it, and a week, week and a half before this, you and I come on Zoom and whoever else wants to, and we go through page by page, line by line, and make corrections and alterations.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Okay, now, does everybody, uh, have a good feeling for what it looks like?
Does, I have a question real quick. Does the more in-depth description show up when you click it, and then it tells you how many people get the backstage at the zoo, or how many people get the bowling pass?
Yes, it does. I don't know if it's gonna show up here. Okay, it's not showing up right now because the auction's actually, oh, actually, no, they have it still active. So, yeah, it'll, it'll give you the description. I actually go in and I write the description up. Um, so I will be asking you, when you're going and looking for the items, I'll, I'll be depending on you to give me a description. I need to know who the company is, what the item is, have a picture of it, and how they're gonna get it. Because if it's a big basket, we're not gonna ship it to California. I know most of our people are gonna be on the shore, but we have the opportunity to have people from anywhere. So I, I need to put on here, see where it says restrictions, I'll actually put local pickup only, or, um, some of the kids art, I actually had local pickup only, or will ship at an additional cost, call the office.
Okay.
So, um, and if somebody called me and said, I bought some art, but I would rather have you ship it to me, I'll say, great, I want twenty-five dollars, give me your credit card number, and I'll take their card on the phone.
Great.
So, very good question. Did that answer it, Megan?
Yes.
Okay. And you can also have multiple pictures here, too. Um, may I show you all, I know this wasn't exactly part of this, but may I show you all something else that I really want you to think about if you want to do um, with your auction site? Okay? And that is that for Youth of the Year, and also Suffolk is doing this, to supplement the items that they're getting for their silent auction, they're using a product called Travel Pledge. Have I talked to you all about this, or are any of you familiar with it?
No.
Okay. Travel Pledge is, I'm just gonna pull up their website, okay? Hold on one second here. They are a third-party company that we don't pay them anything unless we sell one of their packages, and then we get part of that money on it. So, um, I have an account. And let me show you, I'm gonna go show you exactly how this works. These are the things that we're putting up. Laquila, who's on the committee for Suffolk, these are the ones that she picked out. These are, um, packages. So let me click on one. We, um, it, this particular package retails at six hundred dollars. We have a minimum bid of four hundred, so we can't sell it for less than four hundred, and we're guaranteed, if it sells, to get at least a hundred and sixty dollars. If it doesn't sell, nothing happens because we don't buy it. Uh, if it does sell, I go and I give them a credit card for a percentage of it, and we keep the rest. So.
That's great.
It is really, um, now, I, I can tell you that we put up, what, five of these packages? And only two of them sold. One of them sold to me. I bought, I bought this one you're looking at. I, I, I bought it. I was very excited. The other one, though, we sold, uh, like, um, a Caribbean vacation for a couple thousand dollars. That was really nice. Um, so they're not your biggest sellers, but they do have a real bang for your buck, and they also, they make people look. They make people go, whoa, look, they're offering a trip to Cozumel. Holy cow. They're, they're your real wow packages.
Do you think Corona has kind of hurt this?
Yeah. Well, well, here's the nice thing. Check this out. Um, let me go back to the Virginia Retreat one here. Um, down here in the restrictions, must book package within twelve months of purchase.
Okay.
Book package. I can call next, um, September and book it for the following year. I can probably book this in twenty twenty-one and book it for twenty twenty-two. So, a lot of people are actually thinking ahead right now because, uh, prices are a little more competitive.
And they're desperate.
Yeah.
Karen, I, I agree with you, Karen. Uh, let's hear from other members of the, um, board.
Well, I have a more general question.
Sure.
Of November fifth is in five weeks.
Yes.
A reasonable, a reasonable date to get all this done? Especially, we don't have email addresses for many people. We have to do this all through the mail. Not to be a party pooper, but I don't really, seems like a lot of work. If we've got five weeks, I guess a lot of it, what? Go ahead.
No, I was.
I'm not even, I'm not even talking just about the auction, just getting sponsors and.
Well, um, this, you know, we came up with this, uh, Shannon, because we, we wanted to stay away from Thanksgiving, and the following week Rebecca's having surgery. So, and it's not the ideal, uh, date, and it really does put us under the gun. Will you take this down?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Sorry about that.
Let's talk about this because, you know, let's open, let's open up the date again.
Well, I mainly bring it up because I haven't heard back from Kristy Bundick yet. Um, I've emailed and called her. And she's, she's no Mary. She's great, but she's not Mary who hopped on everything right away. It's a slower process than when Mary was there. I mean, I, by the time I get the Swine and the Save the Date cards, if you're also mailing things out to collect sponsors, I, unless someone else does the letters and the envelopes, the mailing, I think it's gonna be kind of close.
It is close.
I don't know. I mean, nobody could do letters that are done, you know, from Rebecca or someone could do, and not count on New Ravenna, but.
But even if New Ravenna called tomorrow, uh, five weeks for getting sponsors, while this is really slick, we're learning, you know, we're not gonna be as nimble as we are with our traditional approach. How about December?
Well, you know, in the, in the olden days, it was in December.
Oh, back in, Stone Age with Sterling? Back in the Stone Age with Sterling, it was in December?
Funny.
Yeah. Yeah, it was as late as, uh, December eleventh, I think it was.
Okay.
I'm calling that, too.
And it's not like we're asking people to go out in the cold.
Right, cold and dark. It's, yeah. I just throwing it out, it just seemed, it seemed like that.
I'm glad, I'm glad you did throw it out, uh, Shannon, um, because I tend to want to press things unrealistically sometime. Uh, Megan, what do you think?
I think the positive part of doing that would be that we're giving ourselves more time and not working under the gun on a platform we've never worked with before. And then if we marketed like those trips and stuff like that, where someone's buying a vacation as a Christmas gift for someone, that might tie in with shopping, you know, shop at home.
Yeah.
And you're also giving locals, so you're kind of checking off a couple different boxes.
Yeah, also gives Becky time to send out email reminders to people to look at the website, do this, do that.
Yeah, I like the idea.
Any email addresses?
Peggy, you were gonna say, say something?
Yeah, yeah. I like the idea of having it after Thanksgiving, before Christmas, which is exactly what everyone is saying. I think people are kind of in that spirit at that time, and, you know, it'll be post-election, it'll be everything that, I, I just, I like that better.
And we, and we won't make Rebecca crazy. She's got, but been going one after another after another. The poor child, you all don't know this. She was working on Sunday for us guys. We need to give her a little bit of a break.
One other question. November fifth is a Thursday. I mean, I wasn't here when you decided. Is that a good day to do these kinds of things, or?
The decision on.
The rea, the reason we were thinking Thursday, we thought Saturday people kind of thought was a, you know, their.
Definitely not Saturday and December.
Let me explain why. And Thursday is super, not super, but it's football night. People, uh, kind of warm up for, for the football game. So, you know, we could come up with another.
No, no.
What we are, well, let's do this now. Let's come up with another date in December. Pull out December.
Hanukkah begins on Thursday, December tenth.
So don't do it then.
Okay.
Is that what you're saying? So the third?
I'm, we, uh, we, I don't know. I don't, I mean, we don't have a synagogue on the Eastern Shore of Virginia. I don't know how many Jewish folks.
But also, uh, Giving Tuesday is on December first.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I see that. And Thanksgiving's on the twenty-sixth of November, so, yeah, okay.
Uh, what, what Jewish holiday is the tenth, uh, Karen?
Uh, Hanukkah, Hanukkah begins at sundown.
But that doesn't last, like, the first night. I don't think they have restrictions on it through the entire thing of Hanukkah. I think the big times are just the first night of Hanukkah and the last. I don't think that something, um, an event on the third night of Hanukkah is going to preclude people of a certain faith from attending our event.
Otherwise, otherwise.
Not doing it on Saturday.
Wednesday, the ninth. I, I just soon stay away from the Jewish holiday.
Yeah.
Let's do it on the ninth.
On the ninth. Yep, I agree, the ninth.
Same time that second weekend. And the other good thing is, we haven't announced anything yet, so it's not like we got, got no, you know, publicity. We don't have to go back and change anything.
Absolutely.
Well, I don't know, it, you know, it's like for our sponsors, you know, for, for our sponsors that, um, you know, have businesses, it's really good advertisement for their businesses.
Yeah, holidays.
Now, also, uh, it does not have to be this way. This is up to you. But I can tell you that we've been opening the auction two days early. So, uh, for Oyster Roast, the event is December, or skip December, uh,
October.
Uh, wait, October third, this way, it's this October third. We're opening up the auction on Thursday to give people a few days to look around and share it and that sort of thing. That's up to you. Some people, I'm told that the trend is actually to go on shorter amounts of time and not longer. People don't usually have a week-long auction. They'll do it one day, like the day of, and that's it, or one or two days before. So that's up to you, how you want to do that. But usually, the auction ends when you have, like, the night of your event.
Okay. Okay, so is it agreed we're December ninth?
Yeah.
Shannon, thank you for bringing that up.
Uh, I'm just getting nervous.
If you're nervous, I'm nervous.
Yeah, right.
Shannon, I was nervous for you, actually. No, I really was. Um, I was, I was going to say, um, think about if you want to with, even, even December, that's two months. Generally, we would do this with months and advance notice. Do you want to have a save the date and an invitation, or an all-in-one?
Yes, I think, I think we should.
Okay.
Um, and, and that was a point that, uh, before, with, it was so tight. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned that we don't have enough ramping up time to really sell this thing before it happens. And this way, we can have a, a good marketing strategy leading up to the ninth, uh, with a number of touches. Gives us an opportunity to, uh, get sponsors and so on. So, um.
Yeah, I have a question. I have a question. Um, I think, I think when we had our conversation before, we went through all the days of the week, and we decided that Thursday was the day. So are we deciding that now Wednesday is the day because of the date being the ninth and not having it on the tenth? Is, is there a reason?
I don't want to be in the middle of the Jewish holiday.
Oh, it was, okay.
Ten days, I think.
I don't think we've assigned a reason to pick Thursday, like that's the best day. I mean, I wasn't there, but was it just kind of a random pick?
Well, no, it, it was tied to the football game.
Football, oh, wow.
When I thought it was tied, I thought it was tied to other commitments that people had during the week, too. And that Thursday night was kind of the night where people didn't have a lot going on, and it wasn't the weekend, and it wasn't the beginning of the week or the middle of the week, but I'm, I'm fine. I, I just wanted to remind us of why we chose Thursday.
Yeah. Well, are we, is, is Wednesday a bad night? I don't know.
It's usually the, it's usually Bible study night. It's like if there are. It's usually, it's usually Bible study night. It's like if there are live events in churches, they're usually mid-week on Wednesdays.
I think any night you pick, you could have a commitment. You know, at my church, it's Tuesday when I read this Bible stuff.
Hey, hey, we can use as part of our marketing strategy that it's Hump Day.
Look, we're not going to have a perfect date. Let's go.
Pork, rump, rump day.
Okay, look, let's go with Wednesday and if, after you sleep one of the couple of nights this week, something hits you, we'll, you know, send out an email and we'll rethink it. But, uh, it's in that neighborhood. Now Peggy went away.
She'll be back.
A man walked in her back door, so she's.
Oh.
Yeah.
Is that what?
She knows.
I hope it was Jim.
We definitely have to use Rump Day.
Oh, no, she let their puppy in.
Oh, there's the man there. No, no. I'm just kidding.
Virtual backgrounds, I'm telling you.
I know, I should, I should, I should.
We put you in charge of a committee, not a problem.
Now, no, because I want to, uh, uh, shift gears. At the last meeting, and this is why I wanted to wait for Peggy. Peggy said, we need a hook. And, uh, that, that, I thought about that and that convinced me on this one Rebecca, we should sell tickets like we always have. And they're numbered tickets that go into a virtual jar.
Okay.
And there's a drawing. You know, I don't know if you can pull this off. There's a drawing and we have a prize.
Yes, I think we can do that.
Because I think we, we don't get a lot of money from ticket revenue, but our community of sponsors and followers are used to us selling tickets. So, what do you think of that Peggy? Shannon?
Yes.
Megan?
I think then you'll get people to tune in and, you know, people, I, they give money anyway, but I'll give money. Maybe there's a chance I'll win one of those trips.
And they get a virtual moneyed, uh, they get a virtual ticket with a number.
So is this like a raffle, like a 50/50 raffle or?
Yeah, so, and the idea is, my Rotary Club, we had a huge raffle. And we sold tickets. I sold a ton of tickets. And I never, only one person asked for a ticket stub. I would tell them their ticket number and that they were going into the drawing. Uh, can we do that some, uh, with the platform or would, would that have to be a side?
Oh, no, no, we can. Um, I just, let me just check the legalities, like the, the, um, little things that we have to write at the bottom for the, for a raffle. Like you, we may have something like, people in Utah can't enter it. I don't know if we'll have anyone from Utah, but we'll be careful of that.
Well, we call it a drawing, not a raffle.
Right. We're doing a drawing on Oyster Roast for free tickets.
Okay, we'll call it a drawing.
Yeah, we can do that, yeah.
Yeah. So how do people pay? They have, it's like, is it annoying to people to, I mean?
We have a few different ways, Shannon, that we could have people pay. Uh, first of all, they could just do what we usually do and have them send a check to me. And as soon as I get their check, I write their name down and I have, I have them. Uh, we could also, we can set up our website with a special page, like the Boys and Girls Clubs website, with a special page for Swine and Wine to pay for your sponsorships or pay for your tickets. We can also do it through the event platform, but to be honest, I would rather have it coming, that coming through us. I'd rather have it coming through a check or through our website, just because of, um, different fees and such. I mean, we always, there are always fees, but I would just prefer that way.
In, in years past, one of our local sponsors put up a website. But, um, would it be better to have your website because it's more integrated with the platform?
Yeah, it's already, um, well, right now, if you said Rebecca, I want a special donation site just for, something Eastern Shore related, I could do it in five minutes. We have that, we have it on our website. We just make, um, another page with its own link. So it's a very easy thing to do. It's just, um, like I said, the, this platform, I'm still learning it. So if I'm wrong on this, I'll come back to you and say I'm wrong, but, uh, it has a whole area where you can actually sell tickets through it, sell sponsorships, but it's kind of complicated and I haven't done that yet.
Okay.
So I just think that the way we've been doing it with the checks or through the web, through our personal website, may be the easiest way to go. But if that changes, I'm coming back and.
Well, you do your homework, but.
I will, I will, absolutely.
But we will sell numbered tickets.
Yeah, we can do that.
I have a question.
And the tickets will go into a, a drawing.
And that's as easy as somebody sends me money, I have a spreadsheet and I put their name by it and their number is whatever number they are in the spreadsheet.
Now, how would the drawing take, could the drawing take place on the, um, platform live?
It's going to take place live. Um, someone is going to be standing there. You know, um, the one that we're doing on Saturday, it's going to be me. Um, everyone else seems to be busy.
I can't wait, I can't wait to see this.
I'm just drawing it here, taking a video of myself and putting it up on the site. Just because really, most people and admin aren't going to be working that night and the people in the committee, most of them have to be somewhere or don't know how to post it. So I said, I'm doing it. I have my shirt on, I'll be doing it. But you know, Bill, you could do it. You could have, uh, someone there taking a video of you. You have your bucket. Karen, you can go over with Bill. Both of you have your mask on, standing six feet apart. You'd throw the bucket at him.
You know what? My Rotary Club bought a drum.
Oh.
And what I'd like to do is have one of the kids, if we could arrange it. Otherwise, we do have a drum, looks authentic. We will make up a numbered ticket for every ticket we sell. And, I mean, the prize isn't a trip to San Francisco, so you know, it's no big deal. But the whole drama of it, uh, I think it will help us sell tickets.
I don't know what prize you're thinking of, Bill, but for some reason, in my heart, I'm feeling that a catered dinner of pork and, um, something like that would just be amazing. We can't really give out or sell alcohol, but we could do a gift certificate to like a Total Wine or a winery or something like that with some pulled pork.
Okay, I'll let you guys come up with the prize. Because you're so creative.
Could be a lot of local, could be like a lot of local stuff.
Let's go back to the beginning.
Wait a second, I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so, it's related to sponsorships. You know, I, we've never asked our sponsors to go online and become a sponsor by filling something out online. And so I question whether we should ask them to do that or just. Huh?
No.
Right, well, I think that's what you were saying.
All we want is their money and we don't want to bother them anymore.
Exactly. Right.
Fill out a paper, send the check like you always do.
Right, okay. I thought I was hearing something differently.
No, well, if you were, if you were, if you did, you don't have to worry. Okay, Shannon?
Yeah, can I go back to the very, very beginning of this? So people are going to buy tickets in the same way they bought tickets before? You said they're buying tickets. Are they buying tickets to be able to enter this or they're just, are we just getting the only money? Before the raffle drawing, was the only money we're asking for sponsorships? And contributions? Or are they like buying tickets?
Well, kind of, because you buy a ticket to kind of come on the, 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 um, platform. But in reality, you don't need a ticket to sign on. You can come in the back door.
Are just giving a contribution, you mean?
Well, well, they're buying a ticket because there's going to be a drawing. They're buying a drawing ticket.
Tickets, you're saying that tickets that they buy from a sponsorship card, not like a little roll of tickets that are.
Actually, they're buying drawing tickets. They're not buying tickets for admission. In the past, they bought tickets for admission.
So how are they going to know about this drawing? Is it going out in the mail or is it something they see online?
We would put it on the paper that whenever we send, we'll get, um, we'll get all the, everything ironed out about it first, Shannon. And then when we send out the, uh, invitation or the, not, not the invitation, I'm sorry, the, um, the sponsorship paper or whatever, we'll have a separate box on there. Buy tickets, $25 each.
What if we even like sent them something that was a, you know, here are the tickets available to you. Before, we've done it, you know, other ways, but here's the tickets. If you want to buy them, remit this amount of money or you can go on and pay this way, or they can mail in a check. Or tell them how much it's going to cost for, because usually you can do a ticket for X amount of money or an arm's length of tickets for X amount of money. We could say, you know, this, these are the different increments at which you can buy the tickets and we'll reserve them for you with the invitation.
I might, we have an electrician here. Among all our other problems, electronic, I might disappear because I might have to turn the power off. It's not personal. I guess I'm kind of confused about what this is working, so.
Yeah, and I, I have a question, so just to give me some context. Last year, um, Jim and I went, Bill, because you gave us tickets. And so, um, I just assumed that it was like other things you advertise. You said, we're having an Oyster Roast. You can buy tickets for $50 apiece if you want. And then people who were sponsors got tickets too. So is that how it works here?
Yes. We sold tickets and, um, people needed a ticket to get in.
Right.
We offered sponsors, and when we talk about sponsors and levels of sponsorship, we included X number of tickets and other benefits from being a sponsor and there's a hierarchy there. You and Jim were treated to tickets.
Yes, we were. Yes.
Otherwise, you would have, you know, paid, what were the tickets? $40?
$50.
$50 if you were under 30.
Right.
Well, then mine was only 40.
It's a little different this year because they're not tickets for admission and maybe we ought to be careful with our language.
Right, right. And that's why I was thinking that when we talked about it before, we worried about how are we going to get people to participate? You know, how are we going to get people to show up? So however it's marketed, you know, it is, if you, um, can, you can show up without a ticket, but if you get a, buy a ticket, we're having this wonderful raffle or wonderful giveaway, you know? One, and so instead of getting your pork and your macaroni and cheese and all that delicious food we had last year, um, you have a chance for something else. Which maybe puts us in a position, and it's just something I wondered about. If a sponsor wanted to sponsor some kind of a gift. Maybe then it would be more than just a, a gift certificate to Total Wine. You know, you know how, when you go to these things and they have, they have different levels of, of prizes, like the first prize, you get Total Wine, the second prize, you get Total Wine and Pork, and the third one you get Total Wine, Pork, and someone serves it to you. But you have to have somebody to pay for that and maybe that would be a sponsor idea. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. And, um, we'll have to work on that when we start getting our sponsors.
Yeah.
Um, I'll just tell you how we're doing the, I mean, really, the, um, drawing that we're doing for Suffolk is almost an afterthought. It was something someone thought of in the beginning and then we forgot about and it just came back. But it's going to be anyone that, we're not selling tickets for it. It's anyone that bids, donates, or, um, sponsors gets one ticket in it automatically. So.
And these tickets go into the drawing.
Exactly, into the bucket. Yeah, this is, like I said, this is pretty, um, kind of last minute, but it's just if you do anything, you get your name in one time.
You know, I, I wonder if that might be a better way.
Can you buy extra tickets if you want?
Well, I, I like the idea of, you know, kind of retaining the way we did sponsorships before. So if you, if you sponsor at the $2,000 level, you will get this many tickets.
Good to do it that way.
Sponsor at $1,000, you get this many tickets. And then if people want to buy tickets, which really are just a contribution, they could be like 20 bucks or something, or what, whatever we decide they're going to be.
So you could do it, what I'm hearing Karen is, um, okay, with the sponsorship, with, um, this level sponsorship, you get 20, you get your name in the drawing 20 times.
Right.
For every 20, for every $25 donation, you get one more chance. That kind of thing.
Yeah. And this ties nicely with the notion of a drawing and the sponsorship thing. In fact, it's, it's a little more exciting when you talk to people about these, being a sponsor. People like winning stuff. And while they, they happily will give us $2,000 for a being a, uh, what, what's that? Bad hog or what's, what's?
Oh, hog.
Oh, hog. I feel a lot better when I give $2,000 and I think I'll win something.
Yeah, but you got to win something. Like what's the something going to be, something good?
Well, well, we'll figure that out.
I know a farmer who, um.
Will give a pig?
Yes.
Give a pig.
I mean.
Vegetarian, I'm getting a pet pig.
You get it.
No, no.
Sausage.
I'd like to pause right now because we got 10 minutes ago and I want to make sure we, we get on the, um, hold the date. So, um, Shannon, do you think that, uh, you have no reason to think that New Ravenna will not come through, right?
I don't know New Ravenna's status. Um, Kristy was never, I mean, I'll keep calling and sending messages. Um, she never was the most prompt. I don't mean it in a bad way, she's just busy.
Yeah. Do you, do you have a pretty good relationship with her?
Not like Mary, but yeah, fine.
Okay, because I, she and I kind of, uh, you know.
I, I don't know her that well, so.
Yeah, I mean, she's, the problem is, she's, we're, we're approaching 80 and she was, I think she's about 30.
Oh, yeah, I know, she was.
So it's, you know, you don't build the relationship like you did with Mary.
Yeah.
Let's, um, give it until the, um, Thursday. Meanwhile, I was looking at the, um, hold the date card. It has to be redone, doesn't it?
Right.
But not radically.
Correct.
Can you hold it up to the screen?
Is everybody, it's backwards.
No, it's not. For you it is. It's right for, push it all the way up, closer. Up a little bit.
I have one that's not written on.
That's all right. Back, okay, hold it right there. That's our, uh, the only thing that has to be changed, the Marianne Smith stuff has to come off.
Right.
The date and virtual have to be put on.
Right, you can see.
We have a little room for something else, but, um.
Well, do we want to say we're going to have a drawing?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. New and different, a drawing this year.
I'm going to talk to Stuart Lundie and Perennial Roots Farm about a pig.
Karen?
What?
Can we have the kid and the pig there doing the drawing?
We don't want to give a pig away.
It's not going to be a live pig. They, they.
But it's going to be a fresh pig, a fresh Eastern Shore grown pig.
For Christmas dinner.
Everyone may not have freezer space for that though, is the only thing.
They could donate it to the feeding program.
Okay, what, what you've done here is you've accelerated the need to pick the, the prize. So I would like to, for a.
I was going to say, a drawing, a silent auction and, and some videos? Don't you think Kathy will do a nice video and some?
Can, can you, uh, put that together and send it out to us by Tuesday night?
No.
Wednesday night?
No, I mean, how am I supposed to do that?
No, don't, do, do an email that kind of mocks it up. The content, it doesn't have to look like it, just the content.
Okay, I'll try.
Hey, Shannon.
And then we'll start on, we'll, we'll get the, uh, hold the date out. And I hate to do this, when's our next board meeting? and I need to do this. When's our next board meeting?
October.
It would be. It would, it would be the 5th, but that's kind of stupid, isn't it?
I don't think it would be stupid to have one in, in, on the 12th or the 19th.
Oh, no, I, that's why I'm 12th. I, I don't want to push everybody too hard because I know we've, you guys are busy. Um, got a little breathing room now. The 12th is how many weeks from to, about two weeks, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm, I'm out. I'm on vacation that week.
Well, that's your surgery week, right?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just going on vacation. I have a lot of use it or lose it time. Um, but you may not need me for it.
Yeah, you know, I think we could, um, we know what you can deliver for us.
Right.
And, uh, I think that, um, you know, we should do the heavy lifting, not you.
I can send Adriana too.
So, so let's get together on the 12th.
What's so funny about that? Is that an inside joke?
No, because she's my boss. I was like, I'll send her. I'll just send her.
Just so you know, Bill's gonna agree to everything while you're gone, right?
Oh, my gosh. Rebecca, you're building a billboard?
But let's, let's try to do this. Between now and then, uh, I like, there, there is a prize committee that's, uh, the prize committee will be Peggy, Karen and Megan.
Oh.
And the three of you will come up with the prize. And.
And we can have more than one, right?
Peggy, I'm, I'm counting on you to get, get her off the pig.
I've got an idea that replaces the pig.
No, that's how I do it. I like.
You like the pig too.
The pig is a great idea, especially for a birthday.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be a good manager here and leave it to your hands.
A hands-off manager.
They have the Wine of the Month Club where you can go try things there. So we could do the wine part by asking Chatham to donate one of those.
That's great.
All right, don't do it here ladies.
Anyway, I was just trying to give you a, a pig replacement idea, Bill, so you felt.
Yeah, I appreciate it, but, but.
The pig and the wine, wine and wine.
Yes, wine, yes.
Oh, wine and wine.
Okay, enough on that.
Yes.
And Shannon, um, between now and then, we will have the, the, uh, save the date all done.
Yep, yep.
And if you need me to do any kind of, um, graphic work, I can help you with that. And, uh, our next meeting, yes.
Danielle is still there. She's good at it, but you know, why it happened so quickly before is she just changed the dates and the place sometimes.
Yeah.
Just to make it more work to get this done. I mean, not a lot of work, but.
Okay, and, um,
I don't know.
Shannon, I, you know, I apologize if, you know, if I seem to be pushing hard on this.
No, 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 that was part of like, I'm sorry, I was in the hills and missed everything, so.
In my next life, I want to be you.
Yeah, I know. Not so bad, huh?
All right, everybody, uh, quickly around the room, Bill, have you got anything you want to say?
Be sure to contact Connie by the letter you have to her and change the date because right now you have November the 15th.
Oh, that's right, right. Uh, so it's a good thing it didn't go out.
Right.
Because we were.
It doesn't make any difference to me, but you say you realize that the October 12th is a holiday, it's Columbus Day. I don't know if that makes any difference to anybody.
Not to me.
Uh, I, I don't think so.
We don't call it Columbus Day anymore, but.
No, we don't.
Yeah, so you know, that's, that's history.
It's Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Yep.
What date did you finally settle on?
Uh, December 9th.
9th, okay.
So Jeremy, while you're on, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, no, this is great.
Okay. Peggy, anything before we go?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thanks for the drawing idea. Karen?
Can I pick out, um, like the things from the, from Rebecca's, uh, auction items, those packages and all that jazz?
I don't understand.
You know, that stuff where.
Travel pledge.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, def, oh, definitely. You're, uh, you, you're Ms. Auction. You have auctions stamped on your forehead. You're in charge.
Karen, I want to give you my login for it though, because, um, like I have all the credit cards, the EIN number already on it, so don't create a new one.
Okay.
I'll just give you my login, okay?
And so, okay, thank you Rebecca, but we, we, um, we need to solidify some things before we ask for sponsors, correct?
Okay, Megan?
Listening and taking it all in.
Thank you, Megan. Uh, I'll give you a call this afternoon.
Okay.
What's happening with Kathy and the club?
That's what I want to know.
Um, we don't know.
Okay.
Uh, I, I've got a call into, um, Kiwi right now. We're looking at a place next more. But you know, it's, I have, if I had an answer, I'd tell you.
Oh, I'm just curious.
Yeah. But one thing I've got is, is, uh, Kevin Will says that he is, he is four square behind the Eastern Shore having a club. See, the club's not gonna go away. We just need to find a place to get, get the kids together. And as long as there's.
Maybe I didn't know, is this temporary or have we, are not allowed in the school anymore because of the COVID?
Well, we're not allowed in the school anymore. I did work out with Eddie Lawrence that we could store our stuff in the pod, which is a good sign, which in Eddie's mind, we'll, we'll come back one day. But the schools are running on two ships. Uh, it would just be crazy anyway, so I, I, you know, it is what it is. And it is 2 o'clock. Goodbye.
Goodbye.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Bye.